Good evening, everybody. I'll open the public hearing tonight. My name is Richard Stewart. I'm on behalf of the City Council. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. This is a public hearing into the bylaws that will be introduced to you in a moment by the deputy -- oops, by the city clerk. Council for the City of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has directed that a public hearing be held. Staff from the city's planning and development department will present a summary of each proposed bylaw, and then the floor will be opened to anyone in the audience that wishes to present his or her views upon the proposed bylaw. Those that have pre-registered will be given first opportunity to speak, and then we'll open the floor to anyone that wishes to speak. I stress to all of you that this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these applications. However, there are some rules. It is not a question-and-answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with either council members, staff, or with those in the audience who might be opposed to your particular point of view. So I ask you to restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw, be as brief and concise as possible. We're asking speakers to respect a five-minute time limit. You can speak more than once, but that allows everyone to speak. I ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption. Please refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, any presentation. Tonight, as chair of this hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that, one, doesn't relate to the bylaw, two, becomes abusive, or, three, becomes repetitive of views that that speaker has already made known to council members. If you wish to -- Ms. Part, it's important. If you wish to have a written submission submitted as part of the permanent record, it must be handed into the city clerk prior to adjournment of that item on the agenda tonight. After adjournment of an item on the agenda, council can receive no more information other than information we've requested of staff until we've actually resolved the issue at fourth reading. So immediately following tonight, adjournment of the public hearing tonight, a regular council meeting will convene in order that council may give consideration to items on the public hearing agenda as well as the rest of the agenda for tonight's council meeting. However, if during the public hearing council requests further information, that item may well be delayed and consideration given to it at a subsequent council meeting. Now, tonight's my 29th anniversary. My wife and I are not having dinner tonight because I'm at a public hearing. So if any of you don't want to speak on an item, that would be appreciated.[166.23][166.23](Laughter). I will now call on Mr. Gilbert to introduce the other bylaws on tonight's agenda and planning and development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, your worship. The first item pertains to bylaw 4296, and its properties on 3465 Princeton Avenue and 1397 Kingston Street.
Good evening, your worship and council members. This site is located on the north side of Princeton Avenue, south of Highland Drive. The site is designated large single-family and estate single-family in the official community plan. Zoning on the site into the east is A3 agricultural and resource residential and RS2 one-family suburban residential. Zoning to the west is RT2 townhouse residential and P5 special park. Zoning to the north and south is RS2 one-family suburban residential. The site currently has a single-family residence to be retained with the development. The applicant seeks to rezone the site to RS9 large single-family residential, RS11 estate single-family residential, and P5 special park, consistent with the OCP land use designations, to facilitate subdivision of 27 single-family residential lots and a streamside protection area and pedestrian trail. Staff are recommending second and third readings to bylaw number 4296. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? The third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Anybody at all? Seeing none, I declare this item adjourned.[301.88][301.88](Laughter).
Thank you, your worship. The next item, item two, pertains to bylaws 4299, 4300, and 4301, 1319 Carche Avenue. I'd like to invite Mr. Jarvey to come forward.
Good evening, your worship and council members. My name is Chris Jarvey, development planner with the city. The subject property, which is located at the northwestern corner of Carche Avenue and Casey Street, is currently vacant. The site is within the Lavelle Square development permit area of the Millardville neighborhood plan and is currently designated low-density apartment residential in the OCP. The adjacent lands to the north are designated one-family and medium-density apartment residential; to the west and east are designated low-density apartment residential, while the lands to the south are designated urban townhouse. The site is currently zoned RS1 one-family residential, and zoning in the area is comprised of RS1 RS3 one-family residential, RT1 two-family residential, RM1 two-story low-density apartment residential, RM2 three-story medium-density apartment, P1 civic institutional, and P2 special institutional. The applicant has applied to amend the OCP land use designation from low-density apartment residential to townhousing, as well as to rezone the site to RT2 townhouse residential zone, which is the corresponding zone to the proposed land use designation, in order to construct six detached strata units along a common driveway. Additionally, the applicant has also applied for a text amendment to the zone to remove the provision that restricts the number of one-family residential units within the zone and replace it with a minimum lot size. Staff are recommending second and third readings to bylaws 4299 2012 and 4300 2012, and all final readings to bylaw number 4301 2012. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Reed.
Thank you. Is there a document in place that will allow for consistent upkeep, maintenance, et cetera? Because these are detached, even though they're townhouses. Is this one stratted?
Mr. Alli.
Yeah, your worship, correct.
That's good. I just get worried when they're detached and there's nothing in place.
I understand.
Thank you. The strata is not bare land. It's--
No, it's a conventional strata, your worship.
Wasn't sure. Thank you.
For separate buildings, which is a little bit unusual. Seeing no other questions, I have a speaker's list here, otherwise I would have been quite happy with -- anyway, the applicant, Sophie Parnell from Morningstar. Morningstar is on 938, I think, Brunet or something.
Sorry.
You don't know?[487.12][487.12](Laughter). Name and address for the record.
Your worship counselors, my name is Sophie Parnell, development coordinator with Morningstar Homes. Thank you for your time this evening. The project we are proposing is to rezone a 20,000-square-foot site located, as Chris had mentioned, on the northwest corner of Carche and Casey in the Millardville neighborhood of southwest Coquitlam. Our proposal requires rezoning of the site from RS1 to RT2, which is the townhouse residential zone. It also requires an OCP amendment from the current designation, which is RM1, and that's low-density apartment, to the townhouse residential zone, where we are proposing to build six detached single-family homes, while the low-density apartment designation would allow for up to 10 units. The proposed homes will be detached and consist of two-story houses with garages in the back, oversized parking pad, as well as basement. Each home will have exclusive use over some outdoor space at the front of the buildings, and there will be landscaped areas for common use at the perimeter of the property as well. The homes will have pedestrian access from Casey, and access from the lane will be to the garages, parking pads, and the rear of the homes. We think that our proposed development is at a scale that's sensitive to the area and the existing uses in that neighborhood. We presented the concept to the Millardville Resident Association, and they were quite receptive. We're quite excited about this small project. It's relatively new to us, and we think that it's innovative and provides a housing type that's hard to find in that area. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And we've got a question. Counselor Lucicora.
Yeah, thank you very much. You know that some months ago, you had this plan for this development of seven units. Could you tell me what happened? Why you haven't got seven units on this plan?
If you remember, the plan situated the homes on seven homes on two strata lots, four homes on one strata lot, three homes on the other. The way that the homes ended up being oriented towards the street was -- it was quite difficult to make them conform to the existing design guidelines in the area, and we worked extensively with staff, but we were unable to meet those requirements. So we brought this plan to staff, and it ended up fitting with those design guidelines much better.
Would you explain to me the problems you had with the design guidelines?
Even though both staff and ourselves tried very hard to work within them, I think -- I guess it's our opinion that the document may just be a little bit outdated. I think it's from 1986. Certain things may have been cost prohibitive, such as very extensive -- they were calling for very extensive porches on the sides of the buildings, and the way that the houses would have been situated to the street would have required a lot of detail on the sides of them. So it was very difficult to meet.
Okay. And what's the square footage of each one of these units?
They're about 1,500 square feet, plus about 500 square feet in the basement.
And you also changed from what you had three months ago or six months ago, when you had a presentation in the Millardville Association, you had -- there's been change as far as the windows are concerned. Am I correct?
From the original design or on this?
No, on all the windows. Apparently, what Morningstar tells me that they wanted bigger windows, a lot more lighting, and our staff said that this is the guidelines that they had from 1987.
That sounds correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just to make it clear that some of the things that were around here in 1987 are not outdated.[774.13][774.13](Laughter).
The bylaw in 1987 may have been very good. That's what was needed. But today's guidelines, we should either live with those guidelines or bring it back to council for revision and throw them out. Because the 1987 guidelines sure don't meet the needs of today.
There you go.
I'm still here, but, you know.
You'll get no argument from me on either one of those. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I had the privilege of driving by the site today and took a couple of pictures. Love these little handy things. They're so great. And I noticed that there are some, I'll call them substantial trees on the site. And then if you look back, if you go back to slide three, you have what looks like very mature trees in the back, and I'm just wondering, are those trees that are currently on the site that you're counting on filling in that greenery on there, or is that just an artist's rendering of what things will look like should someone plant something back there that will fill in the space?
That is an artist's rendering, not what it will look like right away, but probably about five years.
Oh, I think those trees look more like 30 years.
Down the road, some of the larger ones in the back, yes.
Right, I'm talking about the ones in the back. So is the intention to clear the trees from the site in order to--
The intention is to clear, yes.
All the trees?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor O'Neill.
Yes, if you go back to the slide that said questions on it.
Yes.
Now, that's the only picture that was in our package that council received, and I saw that, and I saw no trees on that one. And I noticed that in some earlier correspondence regarding the earlier plan, there was a full plan that showed where all the new trees would be planted. So I actually took it upon myself to find out if this is actually what we're going to be faced with, and no trees. And I actually have, I don't know if you want to share it. I was able to dig up, and you could probably put it on the projector here, and it's a full listing of all the trees. And some of the trees that apparently that the Morningstar is committed to putting into are fairly substantial, so I don't know. Just to share with everybody. There we go. There you go. You had it. Okay, so.
That just shows the street trees. There's about, I think there's 10 street trees that we plan to plant, and 20 additional on the property, in addition to shrubs and all other types of plants, obviously.
So that's a total of 30 trees, and would that represent more trees than are on the site at present?
Yes, definitely. I think it's more than two to one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Hodge.
It's up right now. Down on the Carche side, which is the low side, currently, and I drove by the site today as well, because I wanted to have a look at in particular what the tree cover was there. And there's a row of cedars, very tall trees. They may have, you know, years ago even been an early start of a hedge. And I see here that we show a row of trees, but am I to understand that the mature trees that are in that spot now will come out, and then that they're going to be, smaller trees will go in in their place? Is that the plan there?
Yeah.
And there's no way to keep the mature trees, even though it looks to me from here that they're almost in the same spot?
They are in the same spot, just for the -- it's very difficult to retain them safely for the purposes of development and because of their size, and there is damage to some of them, it wouldn't be safe to keep them while developing and even post-development because of the size and potential damage to--
And I guess then the same would apply, because here it looks like there's something in the top right-hand corner that looks again like a tree. And I noticed when I drove by the site, that was a very tall, mature cedar tree that looks like it's almost on the property line, but again, that would have to come down as well with it.
That tree is actually on a city right-of-way for when -- because Hatchie will be expanded. It's very, very narrow. You said you drove by, you probably noticed. It's a very narrow street. So it will be widened in the future, and that tree will have to be removed now or in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. According to the aerial photo, I count about 14, 13 or 14 trees. Okay, thank you so much. Counselor Nicholson.
Sorry. So if I, comparing what we've got as attached from five with the one that's up on the screen, we show, which does show that little, I guess, the tree that was just talked about in the top right corner, but it also shows street trees right below it. And on this drawing, that area is marked as road dedication.
Right.
So is my understanding then that the road is going to come right over, and so the two street trees that you show at the right-hand end, at the north end, will also go as the road goes in?
That's something we'll have to assess. At the moment, I guess the landscape plan is comprehensive for the whole site. The dedication for the road is down the road. We don't quite know how long that planted area will stay intact, so it would either be just lawn or other plantings or smaller trees.
So the existing mature tree that you were just asked about, the one in the northwest corner, would it be your intention to take it out now as you move to development, or wait and see what happens as the road develops?
Because of the lane that we're proposing at the rear of the development, it will have to come out now for the purposes of road construction, because I believe it is right at the corner of the site, yeah, where the lane meets Hatchie.
Then I'm puzzled as to why it remains on the drawing when the tree itself is not intended to remain. And I guess I'd have the same question about you can't really see it very well on the drawing that's up there, but there is one along the property line back here. What's its fate?
On the, sorry, on the drawing that you have?
That I have.
If it's sitting--
You can just see it, actually.
Oh, right, right. You know, to be honest, it must have been something that our landscape architect retained, but I know that for the purposes of construction, it will have to be removed if it is, because where the lane is, there will also be certain retaining walls where the lane abuts the neighboring property. So I really, I don't think there's any way to retain it safely.
I was about to ask whether staff had some comment, and I saw Mr. McIntyre waving his hand.
Okay, we'll turn to Mr. McIntyre.
Your worship, it's been delegated to me. Yes, we have had discussions with the proponent, asked questions around the trees. In this case, the proponent is correct. There's some development along the north, or the, you can see the driveway along the top of the property shown on the screen, although it's actually the western ledge. Fair amount of lane works to get access to the property, and there's going to be perimeter frontage works on all sides of this property. That tree will not be able to be retained. The trees shown, all the boulevard trees, will be installed after the perimeter works are developed, so they would be installed in accordance with our typical standards for spacing, et cetera. But the existing tree on that corner will not be able to be saved for that reason.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Reed.
Thank you. Through you to planning. Are you not taking road width off each, as we redevelop this area, and you say, or I guess the proponent says, the roads are going to be widened, are you taking appropriate road widths off the property on each side, please?
Your worship, yes. There's road dedication, I believe, on the north side. I believe on the other sides, it's going to be simply frontage works, perimeter frontage works, but we are taking the minimum standard requirements on this property. There'll be full frontage works to our standards on all property edges here.
So then, if the trees that they're planting on their property, they will stay then if you've already got the road width? Is that correct?
Correct. We have, yes.
So the trees will stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think that's it this time. Our next speaker registered, Pamela Zevitt, is here. I know, she's at 301 329 Casey. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I don't want to hold you up from your dinner, Mayor Stewart, so I'll make it very quick. Now, council, both past and present council have my letter from October 17, 2011, and I hope you've had a chance to read it. I also provided some appended information to city council last week, which I think you would have received with the package. That is a particular project that I was a part of coordinating for Metro Vancouver a number of years ago, and to which the city of Coquitlam also participated. I want to speak to the fact that, as a resident of this community, I think we have very strong values about the green infrastructure in the community, and I think we have a responsibility to try to maintain that wherever we can. I think I'm not alone in considering it as part of the heritage, especially in Millardville, where we have a community that was predicated on development of forestry. And we have a lot of housing units that have slowly been redeveloped over time, and a lot of community members actually don't remember the landscape as it was. I've lived there for over 16 years now, and so I've seen a significant number of changes. I think these resources are fairly important to the community, and I'm really urging council to show some leadership in that regard. Now, I am not a professional forester or a hazard tree assessor, but in regards to the trees on the south side of the lot, and that's the only particular component that I'm really concerned about, I think that there can be some innovative work done by the developer to try to retain the particular buffer that's there. Those trees are certainly quite young in their lifespan, based on what I know about those species, and they have been around for probably close to a century, so one would assume they're relatively wind firm. We have a lot of examples within the neighborhood, Rochester widening being an example, where trees which are significantly older and much more prone to failure have been retained, even though there's significant development right adjacent to them. So that is what I'm asking for. Morningstar did receive my comments. I did send them to them as a resident in the community. They have not contacted me to follow up with that, but I am urging this municipality and this council to, and Morningstar, to actually be a little more innovative in this regard. The community is changing radically, and I am very concerned that, you know, there's going to be a generation growing up that won't realize the significant green assets that we have there. Thank you.
Our next scheduled speaker is Arthur Murphy at 1313 Hatchie. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening, your worship and members of the council. I have prepared a statement. My initial question has been answered. It is a strata council, it is a strata development, so common areas in the proposed plan will be maintained, I'm certainly assuming, by the strata. My next question is, though, and it isn't clear to me yet, why the city did reject the original design with seven units, seven housing units on the site. To me, that design was more family-friendly. I thought the two courtyards provided protected flat spaces for families to gather and play, as well as vehicle access into the site. In the current design, these courtyards have essentially been replaced by a vehicle-access lane on a steep slope leading directly downhill to Carche Street. This lane would be predictably used by children playing ball hockey, riding their bikes, and generally being kids. And as far as I'm concerned, they would be exposed to the danger of running straight downhill into the traffic on Carche Street. Kids are going to play on that lane. This vehicle, this vehicle lane access, to me, would be used primarily by vehicles in the morning and in the evening, people going to work and coming from work. And in the, at the other time, it's essentially wasted space. It seems to me that in an era where public transport is being encouraged and bike-riding is being encouraged, that to put a lane in here is going in the wrong direction. In addition, it seems to me that this approach, following an outmoded idea of providing for cars at the expense of people, seems to be less imaginative than simply using the two existing driveways, which enter the site from Casey Street, as per the first proposal by Morningstar. Also, running a lane in the north-south direction from Hatchie Avenue down to Carche introduces more traffic onto Hatchie Avenue, which is currently over-traffic due to a development, a recent development at the corner of Hatchie and Millview. All the other lanes that I'm aware of in Millardville run east-west, so this lane doesn't fit in with the general milieu of Millardville anyway, as far as I can see. There's something else which I want to address, and that is the original proposal provided for seven dwellings versus six dwellings in the current proposal. This smaller number of houses must equal a greater price tag per unit. This will reduce the number of young families who would qualify to own these units. Is this, my question is, is this not contradictory to the city's aim of assisting in providing affordable homeownership for young families? I also have a concern about the protection of views from existing properties, from existing citizens who live in this neighborhood. People live on hillsides partly because they enjoy the view from their homes. Now, I was assured by Morningstar at a meeting a few months ago, a very good meeting, that in the previous proposal, the height of the ridge of the furthest north house, that is the house which would abut Hatchie Avenue, would be 20 feet above the existing elevation of Hatchie Avenue, which, by the way, is exactly 13 feet wide at that point. Two cars can't pass right now. Anyway, I was told that the height of the ridge of the furthest north house would be 20 feet above the existing elevation of Hatchie Avenue. I want to know what assurances would I have that with this new proposal-- I want to know what assurances would I have that with this new proposal, the, the houses that I will be looking at across Hashi Avenue won't be a lot higher, thereby restricting an existing view of mine? And I think that's a legitimate, legitimate question. I would like to also say something about trees. A big part of Millardville is greenery, mature trees and places for people to have trees and bushes and shrubbery. And I don't see nearly that, I don't see that being addressed in this current proposal, and it was addressed in the previous one. So in summary, I would like to say that this is a beautiful piece of hillside property, and I think it deserves a more thoughtful and an imaginative design, and I urge the elected members of city council to direct staff and the developer to go back to the original proposal or to the drawing board. And I think this would better inform the citizens, the council, and would better serve the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Or the, oops, Counselor Reamer.
Thank you. I was wondering if staff could address the original plan that came forward and why we rejected that seven-house plan. Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, worship. And I don't want to keep Mrs. Stewart waiting, so I'll be quick.
We'd have enough on dinner for tonight.
If I could, your worship, just a few comments from my perspective, then I'll, I'll ask Raul, who's worked more directly with the file manager on the application. Certainly, from, you know, planning and developments' perspective, we're very open and supportive of innovative designs. It's one of the ideas about the whole housing choices approach was to come up with something other than just the usual shoeboxes marching up a street, so. In fact, I was part of the very, very preliminary discussions around this project, and we gave the developer encouragement that time to, to think outside the box, and that's certainly something we'd like to support and make, achieve that. And also, as well, the number of units. We don't want to cut back on the density. If a site can support that number of units, you know, we don't want to undermine or under- utilize a piece of property. However, balanced off against those objectives and aspirations, things got to work, too. They have to be practical in terms of their layout. We, you know, you don't want to be so creative and innovative in design, it actually doesn't work at the end of the day, and that's what I was advised, that there were some problems with that initial layout in terms of access into the site around these interior courtyards and having enough room for vehicles to get into driveways or, or into garages and actually maneuver around. We've got a graphic here, I think Raul will put up in a moment, that can show that. So in the initial stages of the application review and the work of staff with the applicant, we try to resolve that. There's designs that look at what the turning movements of vehicles are, like how much space, how big an arc do you need to turn a vehicle around within a confined space? And my understanding was that a solution just wasn't, wasn't reached. And so the applicant therefore chose to go with a different approach, just the one we see here tonight, so. And at that point, may I just turn over to Raul, because he's up there at the, with the, I guess, the initial plan, site plan.
Okay, thank you, Jim, your worship. Just maybe a few brief comments. Staff did work very hard with the proponent. We actually met a number of occasions. We looked at this as courtyard housing. You could see there'd be two lots, one here, one here, one would have a triplex, one would have a quadriplex. There'd be a single access provided into a courtyard situation. As the speaker has indicated, the idea was to minimize access points to the site, have a nice, interesting project, small units. We did review this project and a number of renditions of this project. This project, at the time that it was dropped by the proponent, had continuous issues related to its, how it met the zoning for this type of development. It was over-density, so it was instead of 0.75, it was 0.9. The testing of the actual courtyards in terms of its work, in terms of getting cars in and out of that courtyard, it was very tight. We also, as noted by the developer, the articulation on buildings would require buildings to be pushed into the site so that porches and a number of other elements would be proud of the building, and the kind of articulation of elements would be presented as per the guidelines in the, in the Laval Square Development Permit Area. So there's a number of things that we were working to with the applicant to try and make this work. At the developer's option, even though there was a support for this typology by the city, it didn't necessarily mean that we won't see this in the, in the future. It just means that in this property, the developer chose to go a different way. But we were quite supportive of this typology, and I should say that we were quite, we were willing to look at a number of things on this. We actually asked the developer to put two units together, for instance, for instance, put these two together, you know, to try and move buildings back. The developer was, was more inclined to do single-family development, and they chose to go a different direction, or single-unit development. On the other hand, the developer also was requesting a number of variances. We were supportive of some of them, but we were not supportive of all of them. So it doesn't mean the city's not supportive of courtyard housing. In this particular development, the developer chose to go in a different direction. My only other comment with respect to the comments around the, the lane, the proposal before us is a private driveway, it's not a municipal lane. The development permit for that project, for this project, remains under review, and we would want, it could be specific treatment on that lane to slow traffic down. It is a private driveway. We could have certain permeable treatments and additional landscape edges to that, so to avoid the appearance that it's a municipal lane, because it isn't a municipal lane, it's actually a private driveway, even though it connects two municipal roads. So that's, that's where this one ended, and the developer then presented us another development, which you see before us, which we felt, yeah, it would fit into the, the development permit guidelines, into the land use plan. It's a nice, nice alternative treatment to the property. We felt it was a reasonable alternative, and we supported it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you, worship. One of Mr. Murphy's questions was about what level of security he has for his views. How does he know that the height will be limited to 20 feet above Hatchie Avenue at its present elevation? I'm also personally curious as to what are the plans to widen Hatchie Avenue, if any? Thanks.
Your worship, I'll tackle the first question first. The, the height issue, the RT2 zone typically allows two stories on one side, three stories on the other, on a sloping site, around two and a half stories. We could actually provide a specific height elevation for the proponent, you know, measurement of the actual finished grade. If council so wishes, we can get the developer to get the specific requirements for that.
And if council were to choose to impose a requirement, would it be at this stage or at the development permit stage?
The development permit stage is still to come. We would review it, so it is correct. Councils could provide staff direction that the project meet a certain grade, specifically two stories above grade at the top. Sometimes there's a number of feet that are required to make the elevations work with respect to the depth of services, so, again, I don't have the specific depth information or specific height elevation for the building relative to the finished grade of the road, but we could certainly take direction that the developer work as closely as possible to make it a two-story elevation on Hatchie, and when we bring back the development permit, we could present that issue for council's consideration.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, some issues that are significant to the neighbors, to the people who've attended here at the public hearing, are issues that won't finally be dealt with until the development permit stage, and that's a stage at which there is a, if I remember, a brief in-council public hearing. Is that?
Your worship.
One of those occasions when your worship calls for a public hearing?
Your worship, it would not be, it would not be a public hearing, but the bylaws for final consideration of rezoning for that property would come back to council at the same time as consideration of the development permit. We would bring those back, the bylaw and the development permit, with information, with an information report, which would discuss the issue of the height on Hatchie at council's direction.
So we'd expect the development permit to come back?
Yes.
At fourth and final?
Yes.
Thank you.
And if council has some expectations in that regard, when we consider it later this evening at a public council meeting, they ought to make those expectations known if we're going to.
Be the time to express them.
Indeed, indeed. Counselor Sikora.
Yeah, thank you very much. To the planning department, number one, as you heard one speaker say that they liked the, the first plan with the seven homes, you had also, I'm the chairman of Millardville redevelopment committee, and those people voiced their concerns that they seen the plans for the seven homes, and they're very, very excited about it, and the fact is, they wrote a letter of support on it. Somehow, in your department, somebody took it upon themselves to change it to six, and also that the windows are going to be a lot smaller. Morning Star wants to put bigger windows, bigger, so you can see better. The fact is that, you know, that, that plan was 1987, and one would think that 1987 plan, 20-odd years later, should be either modified, changed, or brought to this council. Also, I think that the first seven units should have been brought to this council for acceptance or rejection, instead of just arbitrarily, in the planning department, cut it down to six units.
Okay, let's be clear. The planning department didn't cut it down to six, the applicant did. The planning department, I gather, worked with the applicant based on the existing rules, and the applicant felt that what he, what they wanted to build on the site wasn't buildable at the seven units of the original style. I actually liked the original style, but I'm, I'm left with, and I suspect, it looks like staff did too, but I suspect that that decision that the, that the developer, that the applicant made, was based on just an inability for them to bend enough their aspirations for the site to reflect the, the rules that are in place. Those rules, though, were passed by a council a long time ago, actually.
1987, that's right.
1987, and other mayor. And, and so it's, this council could reconsider those rules, but we do have to, it's council that sets the rules, and, and council has set the rules, although it was a different council.
You know, mayor, that's correct, but the fact is that, you know, you said that the seven units didn't fit. Obviously, what I've seen overview tonight, that they fit, seemed to fit very well, pleasing the community, pleasing the Millardville Association and all those people, and then home behold, their six, and Morning Star, a matter of fact, personally told me, they'll never develop in Millardville again because of those guidelines. They said, either live with them, bring them back to council, to throw them out, revamp them, or whatever it is, because 1987 was a days of small windows. Now they want a lot bigger windows, and that was one of the reasons why these things have changed. So somebody in the planning department took it upon to retrieve 1987 plans. It's like taking something that's 100 years old and reviving at saying this is what we're going to build.
Counsel, okay. This is a public hearing, so normally we'd, we'd hear from the public, and if you have any questions for staff, please go ahead.
Yes, I did have, and I'll speak some more about it when it's zoning programs aboard.
Okay, fair enough. There we go. Those are the, that was the scheduled speakers. Are there any other speakers to this item? Counselor Sikora, you certainly can take the microphone and speak on, if you like, but you have to do it from up there. Are there any other speakers? Please step forward.
My name's Rick Snyder, I'm at 320 Cartier. Just one clarification, I wasn't sure on the widening of Hatchie, if the planning department said they are not initially going to widen Hatchie, and they're going to leave it at the same width and potentially widen later, or if they're going to widen right away?
Yes, your worship, there is going to be widening on Hatchie. It's a minimum of six-meter widening to make it a safe and passable road. At this moment, it is quite narrow, so there's going to be some dedication and, and frontage works on the south side of Hatchie on this development for a.
Coincide with the development?
Correct. It is a basic requirement of the development here, is to do full frontage works, curb, boulevard, road widening and new pavement, gutter, brand-new street trees and boulevard.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the schedule for that is either before the development or in concert with the development, and certainly before we give occupancy.
Correct.
Are there any other speakers to this item? Please step forward. Actually, if you could stay, stay for a moment, I gather the, the proponent has an answer to a question that might have come up earlier or a clarification. We'll, we'll do that first, because it usually clears something up.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify a few things, and that is to say, even though we do, we were very happy with our first iteration of this design, we are very pleased and worked very hard to be able to fit this design into the existing neighborhood, and think that it's still reflective of, of what we think would fit very well with some of the heritage character in the neighborhood. So we're proud of that design and, and are excited to be moving forward with it, and the old one is in the past. With respect to the number of trees that will be removed, there is, as staff mentioned as well, of course, extensive work needed on that site. And just to speak to the trees that are, that are at the south of the site, the way that they are placed right now, because they are at the top of a retaining wall, even digging basements in that area will make it pretty much impossible not to damage the root, the roots of those trees, because they, the, the bases are basically already at an elevated, at an elevated level. And one other thing that was mentioned was the, was the, the road dedication is, I believe, approximately six meters of hat, from Hatchie, so there's significant amount of space from where the first house is situated at the north end of the property to where Hatchie is, and then, I believe, the height of the building is, is 11 meters or 22 feet. So, and that, together with the slope, shouldn't be any higher than the previous houses were going to be.
Okay, I, I want to ask a couple of questions while you're up at the microphone. I gather that, it's funny that heritage design guidelines or heritage plans could become outdated, because certainly the heritage that they were based on ought to have been somewhat static, but there, to what extent were we, were, was the previous plan a casualty to that, to that previous design, the older design guidelines or the older heritage stuff?
Unfortunately, because some of this design was before my time at Morning Star, and most of those details were worked out within our building department, I'm not really privy to, to all the details.
Oh, fair enough. I see Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming back up and explaining some of the details to us. So I do have questions about the trees to the south. So do you have an arborist report, so, or was there a, an attempt to identify which trees were, could be potentially, potentially contribute to the, to the value of the site and the value of the homes?
We don't have an arborist report, and I think one of the city arborists did look at the site, but, but we, we didn't have it assessed partially, because when our engineers looked at the site, they, they basically could tell that just because of the amount of roadwork necessary, pretty much prohibits retaining anything, just because of the way... We had some of these issues on Burke Mountain as well, that when, when there's any type of construction relatively close to roots, it's not just that the tree gets damaged, but it actually does become unsafe, just because of those, how those roots are growing, and a lot of those species don't have tight root balls, but they have roots that kind of go either direction, so if you're compromising one, it.
Although my understanding is these are very different kinds of trees than you see in Burke Mountain, so an arborist report, I think, would have been very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you, your worship. First of all, I have to clarify the, your response to the height of the house question. I think what I heard you say is 11 meters is 22 feet, and I don't think so.
No. They are, they're 11 meters, right? Yeah, they, they are 11 meters.
11 meters, 35, 36 feet.
With the slope, I think what I was getting at is with the slope of the road and the, the setback because of the, the road dedication.
Yeah, they're starting down here, so.
Yes.
And, and the issue, as you heard, for some, is what's the height above Hatchie?
His views.
And we may deal with that come the council meeting. Well, my other, my other question was going to be, and Counselor Robinson asked it to some degree, but the way I'd worded it was, was what effort or consultation did Morning Star undertake with a view to seeing how many trees could be retained and what could be done to retain the trees? And now, you know, I have a great deal of respect for the engineering profession, but if I were an engineer, I would find nothing simpler than to start with a flat site, just knock everything down, and it's relatively easy to work with. I think it's really a question of approach, and whether you go out and find the professionals who can help you design into. who can help you design into the environment, rather than in replacement of the environment. And I'm struggling for a way to express that as a question, but if you were able to tell me something that you'd done along that line, it would make me feel good.
We did not have, from what I know, and like I said, I wasn't involved, but I believe, Ryan, we do have an...
Okay, so they'll confirm that question.
We do have an arborist report, I guess, then, and it's definitely something that what we do have, we'd be able to get to.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Reamer.
Thank you. I was going to ask if our city had prepared a report, and I was also going to ask what the requirements are for arborist report in these sorts of situations, but if you, we know you've already got an arborist report, that's fine. Thank you.
Actually, I'll ask the question of staff. Have staff done any evaluation or considered any of the evaluations that have been presented to them of tree retention on the site? Mr. Alway.
Your Worship, there is consideration of onsite trees as best as possible, depending on the typology of development that's proposed. In this case, there was some earlier arborist assessments completed for the seven-unit project that really didn't have any tree protection, the amount of building, all the buildings were at the corners, there was courtyards. In this case, again, because of the type of buildings and the slope on the property, we looked at that possibility. We had the city arborist also go out with staff, and they determined that it would be very, very difficult to retain some of the trees on the property. It's not impossible, the trees on the south property were identified as possible candidates, but it would mean a significant change to this development plan, potential loss of density, moving building envelopes away from that edge, and we really don't know specifically. It wasn't an arborist assessment to the degree that arborist could tell. It wasn't like a full report, it was a site walk and some initial observations. As a result of that, we weighed the development possibilities on the site, and again, our assessment was that much of the site is a fair amount of growth on it, there's some large shrubbery, there are some trees that are not savable because of the infrastructure along the perimeter, and on that basis, we've allowed the project to move forward. Depending on the nature of trees on the property, we do look at that possibility, but it's not always possible because of the impacts of development.
If there's a common amenity area against Karchi, and for that matter, another one against Hatchie, in the area, I'm looking at the aerial photo, and it shows that row of cedar at the bottom at the south end of the lot as being, really, its entire dripline is inside the property line, which suggests that not this amenity area, and I gather that part of that house, the foundation of that house, would be upon the root system, would it?
Your Worship, yes. Typically, we find that the, if you look at where the foundation is located, typically you need two or three meters, I'm not an arborist, from my experience, several meters to that, then there's an actual excavation zone also that needs clearance from that. It's quite challenging in this kind of space to retain trees that potentially could be intermingled root systems. Yes, the city could potentially request that an arborist, the arborist report be looked at in detail, determine what potential there may be to retain some of those trees, under council's direction, and that could be part of the review as part of the development permit. At this point, we concurred with the proponent that there's significant difficulties in saving those trees and making this development happen.
Yep. Okay. Counselor Reamer, you're done?
I am done, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you?
Hello, my name is Colleen Murphy, and my interest is at 320 KC. And so I just want to make a couple of comments, and I'm going to see if I can remember them. One is about a request, actually, that council maybe make a decision to review some of the heritage guidelines, because clearly they're outdated, and they get in the way both of the residents, the citizens of Coquitlam, and reputable developers to do their work. They're no longer appropriate, so I would request that they would be reviewed. Also, with the matter of greenery, if the trees have to come down, and perhaps they do, then if you look at the artist's rendering, it looks like there are large trees in the back that will take some, you know, some time to grow. But if you actually look at Morning Star's plan, I'm not sure where those trees are going to grow, because the laneway, described as a private driveway, comes pretty much right up to the back step, so I'm not sure where those trees would go. And with the concern about being able to turn cars around and that kind of thing, if you take a look at the recent development at the corner of Hatchie and Millview, you would have a great deal of difficulty turning a scooter around in there, and you can see people struggling to get their vehicles in. And when that development went up, a whole swath of greenery was taken out, and it doesn't look as if much has been put back to preserve the kind of integrity or history of Millardville. And I had one other thing, but it's gone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I think Counselor Reamer might ask the same question. Counselor Reamer, we'll try that.
Thank you. Just around the Millardville neighborhood plan, which we're currently engaged in, and we have some design guidelines in place currently for our Millardville commercial core, and I'm wondering if staff can address the guidelines which will be in place once the Millardville neighborhood plan is completed.
Mr. McIntyre.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. It's been referenced that some of the design guidelines date back to 1987. There's other design guidelines that apply in that area, a little more recent, like 1997 and beyond, but no, there are a number of design guidelines that have been prepared and adopted over the years that apply in Millardville. And Counselor Reamer is entirely correct in that one of the big focuses of the Millardville neighborhood plan update is to look at those design guidelines, update them, but get some consistency. And so we're very much in that process, and if I could, the last speaker that came forward, I'll check with the clerks department later to make sure, and we will follow up with that, because actually, there is an open house coming up sometime in May to deal with just that, and we'll want to make sure that those sort of residents are aware that we are in that process, and people are certainly welcome to come out, as are the developers and their designers as well, because we want to hear from the neighborhood, and those have to make use of these design guidelines as we update them and streamline them a bit.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That seems to be the message, one of the messages we're hearing, is we have some work to do on those, and we thank you for that. Are there any other speakers to this item?
Can I speak again? I forgot.
No, someone has to speak before you. No, come forward.
You're willing to do it.
On Friday, I went to see them at Morning Star so I could get a picture of the plan. And as earlier, six months ago, they're very gracious and very interested in meeting citizens' needs and sharing the information that they have, so they were very gracious. And because the Millardville Residents' Association and many others had approved, agreed with the first plan, they asked me which I liked better, and at the time, I just had a chance to glance at the new one and was working from memory for the old one. And so I said, well, I think on first glance, I liked the first one better, and they said, so did we, and they said, so did council. And so my question to them at that point was, so if the citizens liked it, and the developers liked it, and council liked it, what happened? And what I was told then was that staff had made the decision, and many of the things that have been said here tonight put the onus back on the proponents, on the developers, and I'm just not sure if that's actually the way it came down or not, so that's a question, I guess, for council, or for planning, or for whoever. Thanks for the second shot.
We'll put the question to staff. Typically, what happens is staff then go back and apply the rules that exist upon the development that has been presented, and those rules then start to shape the details, and as a result of the shaping of the details, we find we can't turn the car in, and that sort of thing. But I'm going to, I'll ask Mr. Alway.
Yes, Your Worship, there was admittedly a long process between Morning Star and staff. I can certainly say that if staff regularly brought projects to council with a number of variances to density and setbacks and lot coverage and turning movements, it would be very, very long meetings. Staff were working with, and it's really, the design guidelines were really secondary. The zoning adopted by council under housing choices, the RT3 zone, had certain design parameters to try to achieve the three- and four-story projects. We took those seriously, and we wanted to make sure those fit with the design guidelines for Millardville. There were far too many variances, far too many relaxations of density and setbacks and driveways. It's a nice, these are nice projects. I believe there was just one too many units on the property. We would have been very, very happy if they joined two units on every, each of those projects, whether it was a duplex in two units, a duplex in one unit, that might have worked. The proponent did not want to do that. They felt they wanted to do single-unit development in a courtyard, and there were far too many variances, in our opinion, to make the kind of amendments to the zone that would be required. And that's really just taking our obligation in terms of the zoning that has been adopted under that typology. That does not mean we were not supportive of the typology itself, we were still working with the proponent, and at one point, they just said, okay, we just need to do a different project, and I should say, we were quite happy with the second project as well. We really liked that approach. To us, both of those projects work well, but this one works very, very well with respect to the regulations, and this is the one that we've gone forward with at the direction of the applicant.
Counselor Reed.
Thank you. Well, this is a very interesting conundrum here, because we're dealing with one of our premier developments in our city, with an excellent developer who wanted to help us move into an older area to upgrade it and densify it and do all the right things. So the question that it begs is, are our guidelines wrong? Not whether what's coming forward to us is wrong, but are our guidelines too strict? Are the overhangs, are the, all of those things, are we too fluffy, perhaps, because it's heritage stuff that we did in 87? Are there things that we could do better? Because if there are, let's not go and change all the development to meet the guidelines if it's the guidelines that are wrong. So perhaps you or Mr. McIntyre could address it.
Your Worship, we do bring forward text amendments to zones, and I'll focus first on the zoning. Those two components that had to fit here was the zoning parameters, we're talking setbacks, density, lot coverage, driveway widths and turning radiuses, that was still not working. The other component was the design guidelines, and that also would affect how you design the site. We bring forward text amendments to zones regularly where we feel it advances, on a citywide basis, it advances good land use, good development. We would not advance a land use change to RT3 from .9 to 1.1.
Okay.
Like, that's a fair amount of density without a very detailed, rigorous examination of how this typology is going to work, because we applied everywhere in the housing choices area. So we are quite specific about that. So that's the kind of analysis the city goes forward with, to make sure that we're rigorous on our zoning.
You answered my question.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I'm still...
Morning Star needs to...
Yeah, okay. I'm going, I'll acknowledge, I do have a question for staff related to the driveways, and I realize this is a zoning time, not, the two paths that are side by side, are they at different elevations? And I'm asking that partly for Counselor Asmussen, who knows where I'm going.
Yes, I do.
Yes, Your Worship, that's an excellent pickup. Yes, that, I believe they may be at different elevations. Yes, the proponent can answer, I believe you are correct. Each of the units does slope on its own separate elevation, that is correct.
What is the, what is the grade? Is there a percentage grade? Do we have a percentage grade from Hatchie down? If it's written on this, I can't see it.
Harmage is 13 or 15, I can't remember. No, it's wrong.
It appears to slope 10 meters from Hatchie to the road to the south, remember that road, over, I don't have the horizontal distance on this plan, unfortunately, 13% grade, I believe?
13? That's a foot for an eight-foot driveway.
I think the driveway is about 13%, although there's variations in the slope of that driveway, as drainage has to be considered.
Yeah, and I found myself wondering if it had been, if consideration was given to two separate driveways that would have allowed a retaining wall to pick up some of that 10 meters of slope. Okay. You had something. Ryan, come forward, please.
Ryan Lucy, Development Manager, Morning Star. I guess I just wanted to clarify the negotiations that went through to get from six to seven units. It was, we presented the seven unit to council at land use, to the Millardville Association, prior to, I think, fully understanding the zoning and the design guidelines, and then we went and worked with staff. Our working with staff was excellent. We rezoned properties all over the Lower Main Line, and I can say, our work with Coquitlam staff is by far better than any of the rest. So it wasn't that staff took our development away from us. My job's to get as many units as possible, their job's to get the best development on site for the city. I think the six units is nice, it's better. So it just, we went to you guys early, Millardville Residents' Association early, and then took it to staff, and it came with too many challenges. The concessions they asked from us, attaching, we can't attach, smaller units, we can't make smaller units. So we chose to pull back the seven units and bring forward the six. I just wanted to make it clear, and we're very happy with the six, so.
Okay, so there were ways to do the seven, but they wouldn't have matched your development philosophy.
Staff gave us options to get to seven units, but we chose to go to six, because the options didn't fit with what we wanted to do, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Lucy? No. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and last time, are there any other speakers to this item? Any council questions? Seeing none, I declare this item closed.
Thank you, Your Worship. Moving on to item three, this pertains to bylaws 4304 and 4305, and I'd like to invite Ms. Tiffany to come forward and introduce the item.
Good evening again. This subject site is located on the south side of Harrison Avenue, west of Clark Road. The site has two official community plan, official community plan land use designations. The northwest portion is designated one-family residential, and the southeast portion is designated neighborhood attached residential. Zoning on the northwest portion of the site is RS1, one-family residential, and the southeast portion, RT1, two-family residential. Zoning to the west and north is RS1, and to the south and east is RT1. The site currently has a single-family residence. The applicant seeks to redesignate and rezone the northwest portion of the site to neighborhood attached residential and RT1, two-family residential to facilitate subdivision into two one-family residential lots. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw, bylaw numbers 4304 and 4305. Thank you.
This is one of those accidents of decisions. The question was raised, how on earth do you get there? And I realize there's some history, obviously, here. At some point, the decision was made that everything within 150 meters of Clark was going to be something, I assume. Okay. I have one registered speaker, Raymond Mock, at 647 Kelsley, around the corner from there. Mr. Mock.
This is my property. Look at the little thing there. Because for me concerned, right now, just a one-family, but looks like they not take care to treat all the thing, let them die or something for my property. But if later they separate to two individual family, so who will take care of backyard or the thing there? And then for me, look at the triangle, you know? And then looks like I need to deal with like two instead of one, you know? So I don't know how they like on the painting, you know? Seems not work out. Look at the old street there, should be like suddenly you see the triangle, you know, on the land. So I don't have a clue how they develop it like that, and then approve the land they can separate like that.
Okay. Counselor Asmatson.
Not for this.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Are the... Okay.
Is through to staff, is there going to be any effect on this development in regards to Evergreen Line construction, the tunneling underneath that? Is there going to be... Running down that side of the street, underneath that area approximately, I don't know how deep it's going to be there, but it's just...
Through, Worship. For this particular site, no. Further to the east, yes, there may be some potential impacts. At this juncture, the Evergreen Line is underground, so there may be some impacts with regard to the tunneling, but that would be mostly within the Clark Road right away. It would not affect 652 Harrison.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item? Second time, are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final, please come forward.
I live at 655 Harrison Avenue, just across the street, and I have no problem with this lot being divided at all. And I've told the owner that I have no problem with this. The only thing I want to know is why is that line going through a piece of property?
Well, I was going to ask that question for a more specific example. This was an arbitrary decision. I'm going to ask staff to explain it or to blame somebody else. Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Worship. No blame here. I think that zoning line's been in place long before any of the staff present. But I would suspect what it is, as I think as the mayor was alluding to earlier, a certain distance along Clark. I know with some of the duplex zoning in that area and those neighborhoods, that goes back many, many decades. So there may have been some arbitrary decisions made back in the 50s or 60s around where the duplex zoning would be. But obviously, it looks to be an arbitrary delineation based on a distance from Clark Road as opposed to being more logical and respectful of property boundaries. But here's an opportunity to deal with that.
Okay. This might have not too much to do with it, but on 107, they've got a... They're talking about putting four houses in that lot. Two houses on this one here, and that's a cul-de-sac. There's no parking in that area.
Okay, okay. The property next to it to the east, we can't address the property next to it, but is there some coordination of where on-street parking would be?
The property, Your Worship, the property that is not part of this public hearing, but there is an application on that other property under a housing choices rezoning. That has not come before council. Each application would be viewed against its zoning requirements with onsite parking being required.
Thank you. That's fine.
Sorry, sir, I just forgot to ask you your name.
That's my name.
Neil Matheson, 655 Harrison Avenue.
Thank you very much. Please come forward.
Just one very quick...
You'll have to get to the microphone. There is actually an audience at home watching this on webcast.
Hello, and good evening, counsel. I just wanted to clarify one small thing on behalf of the owner, she's here as well, of that property. We are thinking that this kind of division into is way more sensible than the development right beside, and that was kind of a solution that the owner felt was also in the scale of the neighborhood without interfering the look of the street and the existing frontage of the houses. So we feel like that was a smaller scale and more kind of suitable solution for this lot.
Okay, and your name was?
My name is Julia Tijanenok, and I'm working with the owner on this...
Okay, and the owners felt that this kind of division was a little more in keeping with the neighborhood, a little bit more logical than, obviously, than the diagonal parley townhouse thing. Okay. You think it was... When Lou was mayor, he's the one that put the diagonal line through there. Okay, okay.
I put that line.
Sounds like it's out of date.
It is out of date.
Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I declare this item and the public hearing adjourned.